To good roads.
No, it's like a million dollars a mile.
You can come in like they did with 28 South of Wolf Road and do a two-year reroute, rebuild for a section of road, but you can't for some of the lesser-traveled roads like we have here in Tufton Road. There isn't a way that that's gonna happen. So you just put up with it and go for it. I will say, however, that it looks to me like the drainage problem we had down there on Narrows on 109, I haven't seen the ice out on the pavement there at all this year. And the state came in and did some drainage improvements this past year. And it looks a heck of a lot better than I ever remember it being down there. So kudos to them for at least addressing that issue.
And I think there's no political or other resistance at the budget committee level to increasing this number.
Correct.
The resistance I have to it is that I need to have a plan personally. And I don't think, even if we were to, I think somebody mentioned doubling it, Guy Pike or one of the members of the budget committee mentioned doubling it. So there is a feeling in town that the roads are important and that if we were to double it, you're looking at about a 12, at the current rate of travel, about a 12 cent per thousand increase in taxes. So I think it's defensible, but I don't think it's defensible with as much information as we currently have. I mean, I can sell a used car once in a while, but it's tough to sell something you don't know about and don't have all the information. So I think the plan that you put forward, which is to stay with the 235 and then get it all together in 2018, is a good one.
You know, and we have some other recent information on the culvert study that I, I don't think we're gonna answer how we get from where we are to good in this cycle.
No.
But...
It's too late in the game.
You know, it's, if we attempt to at this point, it's just gonna be slap it against the wall and recognize that there's gotta be some more. But on those culverts that are, that need to be addressed, again, in a plan moving forward, and once it can be done, as the roads are being done, obviously that's the time to do it. If we have some fairly new roads that have failed culverts under them, then certainly it would seem to me that that would be a priority to go back in and bring those up, recognizing that lack of movement of water through the culverts comes back to what Sue was talking about before with respect to the drainage off the pavement, carrying the water away. And water management is what it's...
The same sort of triage has to happen in that culvert survey. I mean, there may be a culvert, I know there's a culvert, in the eastern end of North Lime Road that's in the red zone, but there's very few of us who go there.
Well, that...
But there may be a culvert on Sodom Road that is half-full and needs a little bit of work, that we need to go through that whole survey.
Exactly. And prioritize when they're addressed and in a way that supports road maintenance and extending the life of our roads, as well as removing water.
I have a couple of comments. I'll state it in six paragraphs. First of all, Jim...
Or less.
Let you people talk. Jim, I have two other careers. One involves school buses and tour driving. They tell me they'd like to come to Tufton Road, they could always get through. And you have some tough hills in this town, for example, Durgan Road. That's a compliment. Fire and animals do not have a problem getting out, and if there is a bad situation, you listen to it on the radio, one of your guys comes out and sands before we're into it. With the new truck that the town bought you, without you campaigning for it, you're able to do these hills in its entirety. For example, Durgan Road, for example, Canyon Valley. How many times over the years prior to that equipment that you had available? A car goes in, a truck goes to deliver to the camp, and he gets to the top of the hill and he's in the bushes. You know you helped pull some people out. You've been elected three times. You and your staff, we don't pay you guys benefits. You saved the town a lot of money, you and your staff. We just had a culvert study. It's been out for three months, and we already know that there's 44 culverts that are in disrepair. I, as a selectman, haven't put any money in the budget to repair any of them this year. We spend our dollars very carefully. When it comes to Ledge Hill Road, you and I talked about this, haven't we?
Spurges, yeah.
That's right. And the answer is...
Catch basins.
The answer is catch basins that they did on the way to Alton, down by Westies, right?
Or like Pork Hill Road.
Pork Hill Road. Folks, when you have ditches like this, ditches are only usable, like farm ponds, in warm weather. Guess what? Where does the water go? Some of it runs this way. If you look at all the towns around Newfoundland, they left a catch basin. They did $10,000 worth a year. Think if we started at Dame Road and did 1,000 feet a year. Within four or five years, we'd have all of Ledge Hill Road done, right?
Over in catch basins.
Catch basin, yes. We currently have 27 catch basins that, they're over here, and they just empty out into the countryside. I have the pictures of Lisbon Road. There's four acres that's been destroyed by 50 acres of sand just going out through there. The first year you were here, you pointed that out to us. The other thing is, the other thing is that when you put these catch basins in, and they cost $1,200 apiece, state bid list, we have contractors that can put the 17-inch pipe in and do it. For example, Paul Bennett and Steve Hunter did the one down by the Tufton Borough Neck Fire Station, what, 15 years ago, and it's still there. Did a nice job. It does two things. It moves the water 24/7. Within five years, this area here is completely dry, so we don't have the sponge effect that we have now on Ledge Hill Road and our busy roads, because the water never leaves, does it? Way down underneath. Correct?
If you don't have a good enough...
That's correct. It never dries out. The other thing is, now you have these little areas here to plow snow, to walk. It's a win-win situation. Hebron has done it. Plymouth has done it. All the other towns in New Hampshire have done it. You've very quietly mentioned it to people, but nobody listens. Yes, it does take money.
It's expensive.
Yes, it is expensive. You know what the equivalent of? It's the equivalent in his housing development, putting the utilities underground. Guess what? He never has wires that are down in windstorm. It costs 11 times as much to put it in, doesn't it?
Yep.
Thank you. Bottom line, this is not personally directed at you.
Another element that needs to be looked at in 2018.
Right.
Right.
And a costing structure to see if, when we do a mile of road, do we do that mile in catch basins?
Yes.
And as I said before, I haven't seen anything.
That was the other thing under my dollar sign is, it seems that everybody I've talked to is willing to invest the tax dollars in these projects. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I think that's a great idea, having a survey and then developing a plan for paving. That makes perfect sense. My question to the board of selectmen is, is that something you want to budget for for 2018? And where would that line item go? And how much does it cost to develop such a plan and to have that kind of survey done?
The Lake Region...
I can get that information if you have something else to...
And thank you for mentioning that, because I, my sense is it's our intent to do it this year, which means that we need to make sure we have money in the budget to do it. I suspect it's not huge money in the grand scheme of things, but we should make a...
Who did the culvert study?
Yeah, what was the culvert?
Five thousand.
Yeah.
It's, that's where I was gonna get it from. They do about seven, Sains does seven different things. They do guardrails like that. And the next one on the list was, for lack of a better word, pavement study. They actually do course sales. And they've had plenty of experience, as you found out on, I stopped at C U. When you did Sodom Road, you found how many stumps? What, 100? Almost more stumps than rocks, right?
In one area, just in one section, I found out that, back then, they had a theory that it was more structural if you left the stump in as opposed to removing it, and settle up and down. I was told that by somebody that worked there.
And you also, and you also found two other things. You found wires that were down the center of the road from Mary Robie's Telephone Company that no one knew about, down there by Aunt Myra's Corner, right? I mean, they fishtailed in the road, didn't they?
We did, yes.
And then the other thing is by, what is it? The Field Cemetery, you found the culvert. It was two different culverts.
Yeah.
And Howard never failed. I mean, one was cement, one was metal. I mean, I remember when you uncovered it, it was amazing it hadn't collapsed. And this is the other thing, the things that he finds.
Okay, well, we're increasing the paving budget from last year. And part of the wording of this, the preparation...
We're giving the same.
Same.
235.
235 is the same as last year. We did not move that 50,000 back in this account. We voted not.
That's right.
I like it when you smile, sir.
I was thinking, you take the five grand, whatever it's gonna cost for the survey out of the paving budget, but that's not gonna work.
They could add 10 to the paving, and then you'd have the money for it.
Because it is preparation for paving, and that's specific to that. While we're silent for a second...
Go ahead.
They did, the office did bring in RSA 35 colon 16, which is changes of purposes for capital reserve funds, and that does require 235.
Okay. Good. I thank you for getting on there. Can we move on to, I have some thoughts on this warrant article?
The same one?
Yes. Item number one is, that needs to be done, in my mind, is Durgan Road. I double-checked the reclaim, the base pavement, and the shoulders for $65,200. I think that's item one that needs to be done this coming year. I'm gonna recommend to the board of selectmen that item number two is Federal Corner Road, that we reclaim, I'm sure I did, $29,437 worth. We put a base pavement down, and we do shoulders. That's 184. That comes out to 249,780. And then we'd, I would make a motion that we add $10,000 to this warrant article. Go ahead.
71,500, is that an addition to?
What are we talking?
The last line.
Item three, to overlay all of Durgan Road is 71,500.
Oh, that's the whole, that's the whole.
Yes. I put that there in case a member of the budget committee says, what would it cost to redo a Durgan Road? I wanna, no, rather than just say, double it, no, that's a figure. That's what I'm recommending.
So you're suggesting that we increase the paving article to 250,000 from 235?
Yes, we said 260, because you...
No, I'll say...
You're saying that in the same time?
Yes, 260.
260.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chairman?
A sure move.
I'll second.
And we're gonna discuss it vigorously.
That additional $30,000.
How much will it cost the town?
It's about a penny thousand.
Yes.
Excuse me. Was it 260 you said?
260, 260.
Okay, thank you.
And we're gonna have to defend the whole thing at some point in our lives.
Yes.
This is the easiest thing in the world to defend, and there are other parts of our budget...
Yes.
Are gonna be a lot more difficult.
That's right. The other thing is, you guys have always supported it, everyone in this room has, we let the people who write the checks make the decision. This is, this is the information. A couple of years ago, a couple people stood up and said, the guy needs a truck. He went out and got one, and it has served as well. Now, the voters aren't prepared to vote their conscience in their pocketbooks. Excuse me, they are prepared.
And so you're suggesting that Federal Corner be done instead of Brown Road?
Correct.
That'd be the only difference from what we had talked about.
Mm-hmm.
So we're adding 20,000.
25,000. And 7,000 feet of Federal Corner is, is that the whole paved part?
No.
I can get the entire, I mean, how, how far does 7,000 feet go? I didn't measure that out.
I'll be honest with you, too. I forgot the paperwork, how I measured which ones, the one you said, I looked at my desk this morning, but I can't remember when I did that, if that was from the stop sign at Brown all the way down to 109A. Because I think that was prior to, I took that measurement prior to paving from Brown, from the bottom of Brown to the interest of Early. We paved that, I believe, the second year or so.
I have, I have the length of Federal Corner Road is 9,994 feet. And this is, these are the figures that were given to the state of New Hampshire. It says it's a public way.
So it goes all the way to the camp?
My code is 171.
That's a classic road.
I actually, the one that you're taking that, the measurements from, I believe are the one that I wrote out by just driving and keeping up those numbers. So I know I didn't do that. I don't think I've ever made it all the way through that road, to be honest with you.
I, I had Jack go through these numbers, and a couple years ago, I had him at Bear Run, Zadi Daf Farms, and Woodland Drive. Those were never on your list, partly because when you did it, we just started the vitamin easement for Zadi Daf Farms. You weren't, you weren't buying it then.
Yeah, we weren't taking care of that one.
And when I checked with Jack this year, for 911 purposes, both dirt and paved roads, you know, like the 800 feet that's over in Wildwood, is all, the state has it accurately, down to the foot.
Okay.
For 911 purposes. Because we get, that was important, because we get funds back. This year, we gotta double the funds back.
Currently, if we move on here, the budget committee approval of the warrant article's on, and the selectman's approval is different.
Yes.
By $50,000. And it's that establishment of the trust fund.
Yes.
If we were to take that off the table for this year, add your additional money for the paving, the budget committee has approved 1,963,000. Taking the 50 grand off and approving the roads brings the board of selectmen's recommendation to 1,988,000. So we're, you know, we're within $50,000 of each other, which I think might work better.
Are you comfortable with that? I see the wisdom of, after a recent meeting I had over the weekend about the future of insurance companies, two more are going out, so we only have two. That's the rumor. That's the rumor. I kind of agree with this lady here. Your thoughts, and what you guys are trying to do is right on, but...
Well, I mean, on the other end of it, we have enough surplus in our undesignated fund balance to accommodate for a major calamity of insurance proportions next year.
Okay.
I mean, if we had to pull $100,000 out of our undesignated fund balance, it wouldn't put us in bad shape.
Financially, it's there, yes.
Yeah. It's not the, and at that point in time, we're just pushing money up against taxes. So it's not as clean as I'd like to see.
I appreciate...
I think, I think having our recommendation and the budget recommendation, budget committee recommendation reasonably similar is a much better way of approaching that meeting. And we're pushing money, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, we're pushing money into the roads, that's a good thing, I think, because that's one of our primary responsibilities.
What are your thoughts, Bill, on what he's proposing?
I think it sounds reasonable, absolutely. One of the things that nobody knows with health insurance that's coming down the road, we know a lot is changing regulatory, in a regulatory way with respect to health insurance that may have a positive impact on where the, where the cost curve goes down the road. May not, but...
We do know that our roads need repair.
Yep.
It's something we do know, so...
Yep.
I like, I like you to think things, sir.
Well, we're coming up a year where we actually save some money on our health insurance. It's hard to strike fear in the parts of the population.
Well, it is.
They might just say, go save more money next year.
Yep. And, you know, we'll always be looking for ways to keep the cost under control. I think it's prudent to, to put some money aside against a potential future spike.
It's called fire insurance.
But it's, this may not be the time to...
Yeah.
Be the goal to die on.
So in effect, there's going to be, there's gonna be two motions. First of all, to decide the one that's on the table.
Right, right.
And then you'll be making one, right?
Yeah. Well, we'll make it when we get to it.
Yep.
But I seconded your motion, yes.
Did you have a question?
I do. You had mentioned adding the study to that warrant article. Do you want to add to that warrant article for the study as well?
The wording?
The money for the Lake Region to do.
We did already.
We added $10,000.
So it would really be 270, is that correct?
260.
That includes the study?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Is that your...
Doesn't, that's not include the 70,000 bucks to do the second coat on Durgan?
No. That figure there is, if someone stands up and says, what would it cost to add some money to the warrant article? We have, I also have the cost of what do we do to pave Shirley Way and whatnot. We have, we have those figures. Correct?
Yeah, we do. We have the quotes, but just a quick question. What if next spring we go, wow, what if Frank comes back and goes, I don't recommend waiting another year on the top coat for Durgan, I recommend to put one on this year. Are we flexible to change?
That board of selectmen certainly has the right to, as long as it's pavement.
Okay.
Right.
Am I correct? Pay them anywhere it deems necessary.
I would say, depends how it's written up on that warrant article, but...
Well, and, but again, the way it's, the way it's, in my memory, always done in the article is, it's, it's an amount of money. It doesn't specify the particular roads.
235 for the preparation and paving of town roads.
And, and at this point in time, this is, this is what we're intending to do.
Yep.
But, you know, good governance certainly dictates that you don't want to take something that's...
You bumped into it on Sodom Road, is that you wanted to do half of it one time. And when you found that culvert, found those wires, and found those stumps, you had to cut back to one-third. You know, but we represent that, oh, we were gonna do half of it, and you had to be flexible. We had to be flexible.
And I think the way to handle that at town meeting is, rather than say, we're going to pave Durgan Road, or we're gonna do Durgan Road, is our priorities are, and just set it up like that, because we don't know, and we might get another 100-year rain or two between now and spring.
Well, what happened most recently is, in the last year, twice there's been an overflow by the bridge in Canyon Valley. What happens if that has to be repaired and we have to put pavement down like we did on Sodom Road by Bill Williams' house and like we, like we did on Lang Pond Road? Things have happened.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Are you clear on the motion that's on the table? Karen, what do you have?
I have the 260, and I have the priorities are to do the paving study and for work to be done on Federal Corner Road instead of Brown Road.
But that's, but that, that doesn't go into the article.
Correct, right.
That's merely the temporary recommendations, correct?
Yeah, and I put this as subject of change in my notes, but not part of the article.
Is everyone comfortable with the... Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 302.
I've got the town garage.
Oh, that.
Maybe.
Honestly, I think we should hold off on that for this year.
Okay.
It's, I think we need to have it a little bit better prioritized, as you said. And honestly, I don't know if I want to spend the money on it this year, where I might be better suited for putting money towards a bridge or paving roads or something instead of the parking lot.
What about a compromise? What about, are you getting a price for the cement pad for the gas pump?
Doing that part?
The reason is, is if I understand it correctly, that is grandfathered, correct?
It is correct.
That the current company can continue to deliver gas there, but it does need to be a cement pad there by...
If we're doing something else, we would have...
Right, right. And we go in and start to be working that parking lot, then we have to bring it up to correct.
Right. Does it make sense to do incrementally, to do that cement pad and get it done?
Yep, I could do that. I can get you a price for that.
What are your thoughts?
Well, then, if that were the case, wouldn't we want to just get rid of this warrant article and throw some more money into building maintenance up there, building improvements or whatever, in the regular budget?
Okay.
I mean, I think that'd be easier.
Yeah.
I'm just staring at those $20,000 for the warrant articles, which are anomaly.
Yes, it is.
And we need to...
Yes, it is. Well, that's why we have these work sessions. Do we need, do we need to unapprove Article 8?
You never voted on it.
Excuse me?
We didn't vote on it. Okay. That's 131,000.
Yes.
If we were still throwing, because Bill was gone, and we didn't really have a number.
Yep. Okay.
Can I throw my two cents in?
No.
Can I throw my two cents in?
Go ahead.
I don't think it's feasible to do the pad right now, because I think we'd have to rework the parking lot, because it should be a fairly level pad, not on the slope that it's on now, because it will defeat the purpose of it. So I would think it should be done when the parking lots are made, so some things can be recreated at the same time.
2019?
You're comfortable with that?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep. I mean, I think it should come off the table for this year and add that number for next year, and it was a better plan.
All right.
Because that was unknown at the...
Right.
...opportunity recently. Yeah, more fleshed out, because I think there were a lot of unknowns. Yeah, it sounds like we have enough on the table for this year.
Yeah. On Article 8, what was the final amount we voted on? 260?
Yep.
Anything else with you?
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Or anything you want to speak on? Okay.
All sounds to be a good idea.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Article number nine, any changes? Article 10?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, we eliminate Article 10.
This is the contingency fund.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I have my glasses on too. All right, sorry.
Article 11? This is the COVID 14.
Okay, can you help, Jack?
Yes, Jack, you're up, Jack.
Here he comes and he's got exactly what I was going to ask him about.
I probably don't, but.
Cost of new vehicle.
I don't have that right here. I do and I don't.
Is there something you wanted to speak on or are you just taking notes?
I'm taking notes primarily. I just want to make sure Jack is available for February 6th, Budget Committee.
Yes. I have the state bid price for a, I think it's 2018 Chevy Colorado. The state bid price is $26,787. And the price that through dealerships and actually Quirk Chevrolet is actually cheaper than the state bid price.
And this is for the four-wheel drive?
Four-wheel drive, extended cab.
And what's the Quirk price?
The Quirk price was 24 and change. I don't have a exact in front of me.
So it's like 25.
Yeah.
And the tonneau cover?
And then a tonneau cover is like $300 and a bed mat's $150 and then a seat cover, so.
So can we, do you think we could reduce this to 26,000?
The warrant article?
Yeah. 28,000?
I'd say probably 28, you could probably do, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to make a motion when you-
28,500.
Reduce Article, current Article 11 to 28,000.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that?
28 is sufficient.
Yeah, I don't know what, like if you go to the dealership, what the costs are for, you know, their prep and all that. You know that.
Yeah, it's like 400.
Well, if for some reason between now and town meeting, there's an additional charge.
I don't know because they can't order anything or do anything until this is approved. So I would probably go 29.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion for 29,000 for Article 11.
And the understanding is that for some reason, it comes in at $5,000 less, wherever the vehicle is. You'll go with them.
Oh, we're not going to spend this when we don't need to, right?
Okay. Go ahead.
Did you want to add the word equip now?
Yes.
Okay.
Purchase and equip. It's already in there.
Well, I, I've just put it in there as a suggested change. It hasn't been done yet.
I'll be ready to vote on this amount.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.